Mr. Remy, can we have Buildings and Grounds report, please?
January 20th, Building and Ground Meeting. We had six topics on our agenda. Number one was the facility use request. Number two, Thurgood Marshall renovations. Number three was middle school elevator. Number four was central office relocation. Number five was ESIP business case projects. And number six was other. So, number one, the facility use request. So far, we only had just one. Also, it was in regards to the basketball courts. Basketball courts behind the middle school. And which is the Prospect Courts, Donald Henry Courts. So, we only had one request, which was a nonprofit charity kings. But before moving forward, we decided that we want to continue to look for, to see what can we do about our current lease that we currently have for that use of the courts. So, we're going to go and double back, see what can we do, what kind of updates we can make to that lease. If we want to keep it, or if we want to just sell it, or have someone else take it over. So, that's what we decided. So, we'll come back with you guys with an update on that. Number two was Thurgood Marshall renovations.
Right. Um, we're not looking to sell the courts. We were going back to the city to see if they wanted to enter into another agreement with us, or continue the agreement that they had with us to maintain the courts. But the courts still belong to the school district.
Correct.
Okay.
Right. That's what you were asking me, right? Or you?
I was just clarifying.
Oh. Oh, yes. Well, the current lease is up as of what, May 20th? It's been up.
Yeah, their current lease is just a maintenance agreement lease. It's not, um, it's not something for sale or to buy.
Okay.
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 So, Thurgood Marshall renovations, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, no. Need to clarify on that. Um, two Thurgood Marshall renovations. Uh, the contractor needs to report damage done to first and second floor classrooms at Thurgood Marshall Elementary School. Demo included, um, materials down to the stuff at a cost of approximately $150,000. Uh, the repair rebuild approximately $240,000. Is about 50% complete. Uh, the contractor expects to finish in early to mid-March, provided there are no supply delays. Costs are covered by our insurance carrier less a $5,000 deductible. Alright, cool. Any questions, concerns about that? Alright. Moving forward to number three. Uh, upper elementary school elevator. A bid for replacement of the elevator was advertised on January 50th. A walkthrough with the district architect and potential bidders was conducted on January 20th. Bid opening is February 9th. The project is expected to take several months to complete. Alright, central, number four, central office relocation. The committee discussed options for relocating central office, including use of the third floor for Barack Obama, or a new modular prefab build on district property. Uh, renovation costs are for the new, or, or a new build for about approximately $2.5 million. Uh, the superintendent noted concerns related to unknown costs as renovations are started based on the age of the building, as well as liability concerns. Uh, which I understood. Uh, her concerns are very valid, you know? Um, but so, we decided to bring that to the table uh, to see what, as, you know, to the whole board, what do you guys think about that? And what do you guys think about renovating Barack Obama's school? So, I would like to open the floor. Can I open the floor at this point? You know, take any questions, concerns? Because this is, you know, very important, you know?
Do you want to finish your agenda, and then we can open up in your question session?
Um.
Like, just the ESIP and then the other about the Asbury Park Little League?
Because I feel like if you want to figure it out now, you know, clear, you know, any questions, concerns, and now get it over with now. Move forward. It's, 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 I'm, I'm just.
Finish the agenda, and then when you have, when we have questions, we're going to have questions and answers right after you finish the agenda. So, let's do item five and six, and then we'll finish it.
Okay. Alright, so number five, ESIP business case projects. Administration participated in a business case meeting with our energy services company, ESG, and reviewed and recommended energy efficiency projects. Recommended projects were estimated between $5 to $6 million, and included new building lighting, building weatherization, plug load controls, building automation systems, and classroom unit ventilated replacement. The plan and regular, um, related saving estimate is being reviewed by third-party engineer. And number six, which was other. Uh, we discussed Asbury Park Little League has reached out to Mrs. Sosa regarding work they would like to do with the Little League field. They will submit a letter detailing donation of services. And we also discussed that the district received a letter of interest, you know, from Charity Kings, uh, which we discussed previously with number one, of facility use requests. And that was basically our Building and Grounds meeting. So, any questions, concerns?
Um, if I could just confirm, it might not be you, Remy. It might be Ms. Gray or Mr. Hastings. The elevator expense will, will come out of our operating budget in effect. Is, is that correct? Or can we have money set aside for that?
Yes, we've set money aside for that. Estimated cost is between $225,000 and $250,000. And we do have that money set aside in our construction account to cover those costs.
Okay. Uh, any other questions?
Oh, sorry, Remy, go ahead.
No, no, I was just asking any other questions or concerns. But you can go ahead, sorry.
Thanks. I, um, I want to know, who's the, who's the third-party engineer that's reviewing the, um, the plan and the related savings estimate for the, for the different ESIP projects? Do we have one? Do we have, uh, do we have one already there?
Yes, the board approved DLB out of Eaton Town, I believe it is. I think they're over on in Gustav Way there. And they're working with Army Protect.
Thanks.
Madam President, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, go ahead.
Can we finish, uh, basically the committee reports, and then go back to Barack Obama's relocation, the relocation of central office issue, since it might take a few minutes?
Okay, so what I'll just do is put finance at the end, because finance would probably go over that too. So, we'll do finance last, and then we'll discuss that. That being said, are there any more questions or comments for Buildings and Grounds? No? Okay, if we have, um, sports, athletics, um, briefs?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, finally. Um, we met a couple weeks ago. Um, we did not meet in December, so it was quite a lengthy meeting. If you had a chance to look over our minutes and have any questions. Basically, um, we are going to have a winter support season. It's going to be broken up into two sections, season two, season three. Um, of course, there won't be any cheerleading, there won't be any participation by the community. It's just going to be the coaches, players, officials, and so on. It's very limited, but at least they're going to be able to have some sort of support season, as opposed to, you know, what we had last year. We also spoke about trying to make up for not having an awards banquet last year, to do something virtual. We're looking into that right now. And some other facets of, uh, trying to raise some money.
Hey, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm hearing a really bad echo. I don't know if anyone else is hearing that.
Is it me?
I, I don't think it's you, but I think somebody else has their, wasn't muted. So, now, now I hear you wonderfully.
Oh, thank you. Um, so again, it was a very lengthy meeting. If you had a chance to look over the minutes, I don't want to, you know, drag this one too long, because we have a lot to go over tonight. So, if anybody has any questions regarding the minutes, as far as our winter sports season or anything moving forward, uh, please feel free to ask me now. I'll try to do my best to answer your questions. I know, Mrs. Gray, we looked into something. I want to touch on briefly, as far as having some type of counseling for our students um, to look forward to college prep, and also, once again, to college, to have some type of monitoring. I don't know, maybe Mrs. Gray will, will speak on that later. But, um, besides our academic aspect of it, we're also trying to look to help our, our students to look into the athletic aspect of it, to combine both. So, if, uh, anyone has any questions, feel free.
Have a comment. Honey, I think you, um, we didn't go over the fact that the, the ceremony that you're trying to have is also going to attempt to honor some of the kids that weren't honored last year.
Yeah, that's, that's, it's going to be both. We want to honor the kids that weren't honored last year, and also honor the students from this year. So, we're, we're working on that right now, since last year's students, uh, they were not recognized. They haven't received their awards yet. So, we're, that's in the process to probably do a combination of both.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay, can, um, Ms. Cook, curriculum instruction, please?
Good evening, everyone. Okay, um, item number 11. So, MLK Upper Elementary School is looking to have their own esports club, which is electronic sports. They will have their own, um, competitive game league, which teams will consist of students who compete against each other in-house after school. Participation will be centered around their own PBIS program. Students will need consistently maintain a positive behavior, complete classroom assignments, and sustain academic efforts. The program will also encourage career paths in media, i.e., um, podcasting, video editing, journalism, as well as opportunities to earn college scholarships and enhance opportunities in the STEM field. Estimated cost is $15,000, including staffing, license, equipment, funding funds, will come out of our SIA account. That's a student investment account grant. Um, item number 13 is the approval to post for two curriculum writers to update existing curriculum to reflect the 2020 NJSLA standards in science, visual and performing arts, social studies, including the Amazot and integration in civics, the 21st century learning in world languages. Each curriculum writer will not exceed 50 hours each. The cost will not exceed $4,100. Um, there are state, these are state-required updates. And item number 14, that's approval 14 of the CTE Engineering Academic Student and Mr. Kevin Gold to work to, sorry, to work in collaboration with the DILA Commission on a water quality and engineering project beginning February 2021 through March 2021st, weather permitting, and there is no cost to the district. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, no questions or comments? We're going to move on to finance. Mr. Lotter Rock?
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, do you want to do policy before that? Because, uh, policy has.
Oh, sorry. Um, Joe, Mr. Rock?
Hey there. So, um, policy is not much to report. Uh, we had our first meeting of the year. Um, there are some second readings, uh, Strath S Mailer, um, 221. Uh, there's about 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, about 13 policies and regulations from that alert that we briefly discussed. Um, and the, uh, they're on, uh, this month's agenda for second reading. There was, uh, TNR 7510, use of school facilities that, um, that was referred over to Buildings and Grounds. So, um, and, and Mr. Remy spoke about that before. So, and then, um, we went over some procedures in place for policy. Um, we discussed the status of, uh, the policy regarding weapons um, related to where we are, where we are in having a first reading on that. Um, and, uh, those were kind of the main, uh, the main topics. So, um, if anyone has any questions or comments, um, any of the other members of the committee, if I missed anything that feels important, please speak now.
Okay. Missed a lot of rock.
Okay, for finance, thanks. I think we've got, uh, uh, then two big issues to discuss. So, let me just briefly say, administrations continuing to work uh, to address the legislative audit recommendations. And that our purchase power agreement, if you saw, we got some, some good press on that. We have an agreement for a, a zero rate for what our electrical cost with solar landscape. Board attorney has approved it. Solar Landscape's putting together their plans, and they will submit those for permits. And that'll be the next step on that project. That gets us, uh, to the 2022 budget. Uh, again, we discussed, uh, what we'll be doing in light of the S2 bill, which currently is reducing, uh, our funding through 2025. Um, the reduction in funding for next year is going to be approximately $5.8 million. And just to remind those, or, uh, or point out to everyone, there, there's two components to this. Under, uh, state formulas and rules for school district funding, we're both losing funding and the state through a formula says what the municipality should be paying in, in supporting the district. The formula, and this is a moving target from when we've started, but obviously, as you know, um, resources in, in Asbury have gone up. So, um, the local fair share that the municipality should be paying in taxes toward the school district, according to the state, is $21,900,000. We're currently paying $10,400. We've been increasing that number. Uh, and you can see how far, uh, we've got to go. I'm going to come back to a, um, an exhibit we've got in just a second. In terms of, uh, balancing the budget for next year, we'll, we'll still have a, you know, somewhere around at least $3 million to cut. Administration discussed, we have had a number of retirements and resignations that are potential savings that have come up, in, in the past, uh, in the past few months. By not, um, replacing those individuals, but reassigning, we can, uh, save in terms of the 2022 budget. Uh, we also discussed outsourcing certain areas. Um, we, we can discuss that further. There was some preliminary information that, uh, Mr. Hastings can, can provide if need be. And we're also, uh, I was going to, as, uh, head of the committee, reach out to local legislators on behalf of the board request from either our last meeting or the, the meeting before. Uh, so, let me point out, I did, uh, touch base with our state senator. Uh, I pointed out that we had seen in our state board, um, newsletter that there were some discussions going on about extending the time period for, for S2. Uh, he was not involved in those discussions, but he mentioned that he would be, uh, supportive of our request to extend the time period by which we have to meet the requirements. Uh, and, uh, and that he would bring that up on our behalf. He would coordinate with, uh, our assembly people, so we, we don't have to contact them separately. He just requested some, uh, some bullet points be given to him in writing so that he could kind of see the context, and we can do it from the context of Asbury, and then what we were requesting. So, I think, uh, I mean, I could work with Ms. Gray or Mr. Hastings, if you like, or we could have Adam, however you want to handle that. But we said, well, we, we would get them some written bullet points to discuss. And I was assuming where we've been, what we've done, the, uh, the difficult impact on the district and the community if we, if we maintain the same schedule in light of, you know, the districts and the community have both had to deal with a global pandemic and all those issues.
Mr. Lotter Rock, I believe, um, Mr. Weiss has been working on a letter uh, from our last discussion, uh, last month in regards to that. Have you seen it yet?
Actually, if I can, um, I did have some discussions, if I'm not mistaken, with Mr. Hastings about that. Um, as well as, I can't remember if I had a discussion with, uh, Madam President about that as well, uh, with regard to next steps. I'm happy to discuss it offline, but as of now, I have not written a letter. Um, and I await further guidance, uh, from, from the board as to next steps.
Yeah, I'm open to however the board wants to handle it.
If I may, I have, I would support. I think we should work on something with all the facts that we can gather regarding our community, the effects of, uh, S2 and the effects of the recent COVID situation, along with the economics and the status of, uh, our, uh, community in regards to maybe some relief, maybe another year, and to extend S2, if we could. I think it's a good idea. Things are different than they were 40 years ago or five years ago.
I guess in terms of just getting the bullet points together, if, um, Jeff, if, uh, Dominic can, um, just quickly reach out to, um, Superintendent Gray and Jeff, and I guess if he wanted to, anyone else on your committee, just so you can get something over to, um, to the legislation, to the legislators, simply, you can do that.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's that one. What I wanted to do is, is open it up and have the board have a discussion with regard to giving the administration a, uh, strong sense of, of what's supported in terms of, uh, a revenue increase. So, as we move through February, we have a, a better sense of the, the target for balancing the budget. Along those lines, I don't know if everyone was able to, um, look at the, uh, the attachment Mr. Hastings sent out about the effect in light of what the current ratables are in Asbury. Um, it did the best we can, trying to do this early on, what the annual increase would be for a taxpayer uh, on assessed value at different levels of revenue increase. So, we decided as a committee, we'd look at, uh, 1.5 million revenue increase, 2 million, and a 2.5 million revenue increase. And you can see, if we just look at the average assessed value uh, of, of a home in Asbury, which you might recall, if you look at that number now, the average home is assessed at almost $460,000. It's a big jump from, from last year. You can see what the effect would be at those different levels. So, for example, if we were to say we would increase revenue to the district by 1.5 million, the annual increase to someone with a home assessed at $460,000 would be $135, or $11 monthly. At 2 million, the average assessed home, the increase would be $249, or $20.76 monthly. At 2.5 million, the average assessed home would have an increase of $363, or $30 monthly. Now, we kind of started the process years back, and, and based on where the formula was putting us in terms of what the municipality would have to pay, we thought doing about 2 million every year would get us there. Last year, um, in, in light of just at that point getting hit with the pandemic, not knowing what was going to happen, remember that we did a lesser amount of 1.5 million. Uh, I'll open it up to the floor without first saying what, what I support, but I can't help myself and have to say, I, I would request that board members not consider the 1.5. We, we can't, we can't fall that far behind. Perhaps the, the timeline will be extended, perhaps not. But, um, I throw that out there to you. And I don't know if you need the numbers again, or if you can see the exhibits, but I'd like to throw it out to get a sense of, uh, what people are supporting.
I have a question, Mr. Lotter Rock, it's Barbara Sinsky.
Yeah.
I was wondering, the numbers that you have here, is that for the 2020? I was wondering, the numbers that you have here, is that for the 2021 equalized, equalized value? Or is that, uh, not including the new, uh, ratables?
Uh, it includes the new ratables. Uh, I, I've got to defer to Jeff on any details beyond that. But we were able to get an update on the ratables. The ratables now, according to this chart in Asbury Park, are up to 2 billion.
I just looked today and I, uh, I have one that's, uh, about, uh, 12 million more than what you have. Today I looked one up from, uh, the county website.
That was 2 billion, 22 million?
Uh, I have 2 billion, 32 million, 744,575 dollars, but I don't know if that includes the new, uh, properties coming online from pilots.
Yeah, but, okay, I mean, that could be. I, I think what everyone is going to have to consider is what, we're trying to jump on this earlier, it's going to be ballparking it. So a- as you look at these numbers, don't get caught up in looking for specificity and perfection on the numbers. It's, eh, the ratables, I guess, could, could go up by the time, uh, we actually get, uh, finalization from the, from the city and, and maybe other factors. But what we tried to do as a committee is give you more detail than you've had in the past. So the administration has been, been helpful in putting this together so that there, there's little more you can see, but it's out there. Things could change a bit.
Well, I agree with your 2 million, uh, proposal because you don't want to hit everybody at the end with an astronomical tax increase. It's better to do it gradually and hopefully we can get an extension.
Others?
Dominic, what did, so, eh, what did the legislators say in terms of, um, they weren't involved in the discussions? Um, are they planning to get involved? Like, what, what was the outcome of how they're going to advocate for us?
Yeah, he, he, he represented that if he got a little more information in writing, he would advocate for us. He wasn't aware of the discussions going on currently about, uh, school budgets that we had seen in the state board newsletter.
Was there any, was there any discussion about the extension idea?
The extent?
Like extending, extending S two? Instead of it being like a five-year deal?
Yeah, yes, that would be, that was the only discussion that our, that our request, it, it's not like S two is going to go away, that we're taking a more realistic approach, that it would just be extending the time period with the idea, like, like Barb just mentioned, if you wait too long on these increases, you're, you're going to have a disastrous year at some point.
Mm-hmm.
That it, discussion on that? All right, Mr. Lauderrock, do you have anything else?
Well, I mean, I don't know, I, I mean, I would throw out, I would actually throw out splitting the difference between 2 million and 2.5 and doing 2 million, 250,000, so, uh, all I heard was I had, I had Barb at 2 million and so I'm just going to throw that out to everybody, which again, ballparking it, a monthly increase in taxes of about $25 for the average, uh, taxpayer.
Agree with Mr. Lauderrock. I have to agree with you, Mr. Lauderrock. Um, I tend to agree on, you know, the 2.5. Um, I'd settle at the 2.2 and a half so that we're not caught at the end having to do 5 million.
Question?
Yeah, I mean, there's going to be an argument to go 2.5 now, yeah. Miss Breach?
Yeah, Mr. Lauderrock, what is that percentage wise as far as the increase? You said $25 per average household. What, what's that? Is that 2%?
That's $25 on, from, help me out here, uh, Jeff, but I think, uh,
Because that's what people are going to ask, you know, what, what percentage?
Right, right, uh.
That would be monthly, 25?
That's 20, 25 monthly, uh, right, which is going to be, okay, I got to do some math here.
Do you know what the residents are going to ask? They're going to ask, you know, what, what's our taxes going up per year? Is it going to be 2%, 3%? I know we're capped out of how much we can actually raise percentage wise.
I get 11.6. What do you get, Jeff?
Uh, I had 14%.
Yeah, we're not capped at 2 because of the situation, Miss Breach.
Yeah. You get 14 on the 2.25 or the 2.5?
Uh, 2.5, $363 is 14% increase from the 2585.
Okay, so at 2.5, it's 14. At 2.25, it's 11.6.
That's a lot, that's actually a, a, a lesser tax rate. Tax rate increase.
Well, no, the rate, the rate itself is going up, right? Because the value is, is not increasing as much as the actual tax increase. So the rate is going up and you're looking at roughly going from 0.56 to, at, uh, 2 and a half was 0.64, or $100 of assessed value. But again, I think, as Mr. Lauderrock has said, looking at the annual increase, looking at a monthly increase, uh, to the taxpayers is, is certainly one way to, uh, to present the information. And we can certainly provide maybe additional information that you can have out of, you know, a tariff sheet or something.
But as, uh, as Breach asked the question, right, that as an individual just saying, well, what's the increase for the school portion of my taxes? It's ranging between 11 and 14%. We'll go, I'll just go back with that range to the committee and we'll, we'll decide or we'll, talking to Ms. Gray and, and, uh, Ms. Morris and everybody.
I think that's a good idea, Dominic.
Okay.
I think, I think you've got the right, I think you've got the right, uh, thinking on it, um, in terms of splitting the difference between the two and the 2.5.
Okay, thanks.
Madam President, can I make a suggestion, it's Barbara Lysinski?
Go ahead, Barbara.
Uh, we, we should put the work session maybe and then open public and we can continue the discussion, uh, after some of our agenda about, uh, Barack Obama, elementary school and, uh, central office.
Yeah, we also have the board, um, goals, um, board, but we, we should do at least an, uh, public participation part of this meeting and then closing.
Yeah.
For definite.
Um, public participation in accordance with the, the board policy 0161. Uh, the, public participation is now open. Uh, please state your name and your address and can ask your questions in three minutes.
Again, we have the public comment, uh, email address, publiccomment@asburypark.k12 nj.us. And we have, uh, comments or hand raised function of the webs, of the web event here. Or if you're on the phone, you can hit, I believe it's star three and you'll be put into the queue. And then when we unmute you, you'll hear the statement that you've been unmuted. So we'll pause to, to give that a chance to, uh, queue up. Mr. Branigan, do you see any, uh, comments from callers?
At this time, no one has raised their hand.
Okay, and we have no public comment email.
Okay, so we're closing public participation?
At 7:05?
At this time, can I have a motion to close the workshop session?
Move it.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion to close. Moved by Mr. Grillo, seconded by Ms. Lysinski. All in favor?
Hold on.
Any opposed?
We're going to have to hold up for the next meeting you just adjourned.
All right, um, in accordance with the provisions of the open public meeting at NJSA 10-4-6, PL 1975, C 2002-31-S1, amended 2006, C 70-S2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agen- the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press, the New Poster, on January 8, 2021 via email. Copies of this notice has also been placed at the administration building, bulletin board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on January 8, 2021. Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive, progressive, a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skill and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. We will call police and state.
Ms. Alvez Anderson?
Here.
Miss Breach?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Grillo?
Here.
Mr. Lauderrock?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Lysinski?
Here.
Ms. Etienne?
Here. Can we stand for the flag, so we can? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So do we have presentations?
No.
So the superintendent, um, originally had a presentation, but I really think that it should be, um, tabled and presented to, uh, buildings and grounds with any additional information material?
Well, it's under my superintendent's report.
Okay.
The superintendent's presentation? I thought you were asking for any other presentation. Because in number five, there are none.
Okay.
I just have my presentation.
All right.
That's the, about the board relocation.
Okay, so, um, I would like it to be moved to, um, buildings and grounds, but, um, go ahead.
Good evening. Maybe I shouldn't have. Good evening. Uh, tonight I'm going to just present the, as was shared by board member Mr. Remy in our Buildings and Grounds meeting. I had made a recommendation and I shared in the Buildings and Grounds meeting that I wanted to add the rationale for the recommendation um, in terms of the relocation to, of the central office. By way of context, the recommendation that I was making is based on a timeline and our ability to move within said timeframe. Um, we have a lease agreement that exists for our current location and that lease agreement ends April 2022. And so in looking at that timeline and making some preparations and being fiscally responsible, I looked at and enlisted the support of our district architects to round whatever recommendation that I would make that has an impact on the district's day-to-day operations based on data and metrics that were provided from our district architect. So I will direct the attention of the board, um, to one of the items, attachment one, I refer to it as, where I had our district architects review the building, a walkthrough was conducted. And in the review of that building, um, as was shared with me by our board president, the desire of the board at that time of the conversation was, uh, on the relocation of the central office to the third floor of the Barack Obama building. In understanding and knowing that, but also in understanding and knowing that there would be a significant impact and we want to be fiscally responsible in terms of timeframe, in terms of the structure, in terms of making sure that we have all the necessary components to make our transition, I also looked at the cost for a modular prefab unit that could be housed on the district's property, which, um, it goes back to the comment that was shared by Ms. Remy in the repeating of the minutes and his recitation of the minutes. So the two items for your comparison or that would frame my comparison stem from the overall cost for the Board of Education relocation to Obama School, third floor. Um, that estimated cost came out to 2.18 million dollars for the priority and for being, and initially the cost that would be needed for the initial move-in. There would be, uh, it would be necessary after the move-in to ensure that the building was brought up to code for the change of its use, additional renovation work that would be necessary. That totaled somewhere over $320,000. And so in looking at the combined cost for priorities one and two, we're looking at a cost that's close to about 2.5 million. We had another property that we had discussed and the other property that we had discussed or I had presented to the board in, um, previous, at a previous meeting as a possibility back in June of 2019, as a possibility for another location for, uh, the board office would have required some demolition work. The demolition work and then the placement of that modular unit brought that total to a 2.6, slightly a little over 2.6 million dollars, 2.68 million dollars to be exact. And so with the, uh, not having to demolish that building, but rather place the modular building on a different property. but rather place the modular building on a different property, uh, for this, of the district, then that would bring the cost down to approximately 2.1 million dollars. It was because of that potential savings and the variables that we are able to control with regard to a prefabricated building, that I made the recommendation to the board that a move, um, that included a prefab building would save a significant amount of money for the district. So I wanted to be able to provide my rationale for that recommendation, um, to the board tonight. Are there any questions?
Uh, yeah. The 2.1 million cost and that would then be either a site behind the high school or between Obama and the upper elementary. Is that correct?
That is correct. I can talk now?
Yeah.
You can hear me?
I can hear.
The name.
They can hear.
Okay. And it should be noted that when, and, and looking at making that recommendation, those code, uh, upgrades to ensure that the building's use, the change of use is supported, those were also, there's also a concern with regard to anytime we are rehabbing or renovating a structure, that there may be some unanticipated and unexpected surprises during that renovation that would likely have two impacts, uh, with that work. One would be additional costs outside of the scope that's been presented to you for unknown, we don't know, you know, potentially what might, what might happen. And then the timeframe that would be associated with whatever those unexpected, uh, renovations might entail.
Okay, so I'd like to make a comment. Um, I know we've been, uh, kicking this around and talking about it for a couple of years now. And, um, there's things that we have to look at. I see that this reformatting is as of January this year, but this original modular projection is from 2019. Um, and we had a couple of discussions just because I don't want to lose athletics, athletic fields and outdoor fields for children and the, um, the optics of having, building an additional building when we have a building sitting empty. Also, the, the funding of one building would leave us lacking in funding to go back and work at Obama because we could not leave Obama empty. We still would have to go back and do work at Obama. So I think if we can, um, move on the resolution tonight, but also get a new workup for the modular, so we can compare 2021 specs with 2021 specs, but still move forward with the resolution of getting, um, getting the architectural rendering so we, we know a little bit more because we had questions about some of the cost projections on, um, on both of the, uh, on both of the estimates. So I would like to discuss this in Buildings and Grounds and bring this back next, next month when we have more information.
Madam President, I have a comment, Ms. Barbara Lozinski.
Go ahead, Ms. Lozinski.
I agree with, um, Ms. Etienne about, uh, going back to Buildings and Grounds. Uh, this doc, these documents we got, uh, just today and I think it'd be, um, a benefit for even the Buildings and Grounds Committee to walk through Obama with the architect to discuss some of these, uh, items that are on here because there are a few minor things that I think that, uh, our maintenance department can take care of, including painting and wall repair, uh, ceiling tiles. I know we have ceiling tiles in our district, it's not going to cost any money. I, I don't know if we really need to replace every interior door for $97,000. I think there's some things that can be penciled off here on this estimate and to get an understanding about what the architect and the administration talked about when they walked through these building, the building on the third floor. Because as a third floor only, I just think, uh, $2 million to renovate a third floor when we just emptied the school that had teachers and students in it is a little bit, um, maybe a little bit excessive. I just think it would be better to go back and talk about all this at Buildings and Grounds. Uh, to put a modular up, I think that's adding a building to our district like, uh, with an empty building sitting there, that it's kind of in contrary to what our legislative service's audit, legislative district audit had, had said that we should be, um, housing central office in a district-owned building. I don't think they intended us to purchase a new building, uh, prefab and put it on our property and leave one of our buildings empty. So I think to be, um, a little bit conscious of having an empty building and actually using it, we're like Ms. Etienne said, we have to do maintenance on that building anyway. It's going to have to have renovations, even if somebody else comes in there. We're responsible as a landlord when they use it. I think it's a, a good idea to go forward with the Obama plan to see what it really is going to cost and what, what it all entails.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd just like to make a comment at this point. Obviously, the board, um, is going to make its own decision, uh, in terms of uh, which choice they're going to move ahead with. However, let me stress the fact that once you get the financing straightened out as to how much you need and how you are going to move ahead with this, I, I just want to caution the board that the, it, there is an issue, a very important issue with the Obama, uh, choice. And that is that it is a very, very old building that I am certain, much like a house, the minute you start to take it apart, you're going to have cost after cost added. My concern is that once the financing for this is in place, you have a question. If you run into higher costs because of some of the, um, unexpected, let me say, points that even the architect hasn't anticipated, um, you have a problem as to where you're going to get that additional money. It's not like financing, uh, even for that matter, through a referendum because you can through an effort, referendum, uh, at times, uh, put in the monies that, that might cover any, in fact, it's required, I think. Uh, is it not, Adam, that still that, uh, in a referendum, uh, there'd be an additional 10% or whatever it is that's in the different line items?
Yeah, I, I can't say with certainty that it's still there. I, I'd have to look into that.
Okay, but I know that it was there and there is a percentage that they usually require in a referendum that you budget for. And that's for this very, uh, point that I'm attempting to make here, that because you're not going, uh, you know, through, uh, normal financing, let's say through a referendum, please be very careful that we don't find ourselves in a situation, and especially Asbury, where you've now run into a, let's say, an additional asbestos cost or whatever it is, uh, plumbing, electricity, and that we now need another, uh, 500,000 or a million dollars and there's no place to get it. So that's, that's my only comment.
I do have an appreciation for your comment, uh, Ms. Moore. Um, I was just like, well, one of the issues is that, yes, Barack Obama is a very old building, but we didn't vacate the building, we still had it in service up until June and we didn't empty out the building because there was something wrong in the building. We emptied it out because we had a lack of enrollment. Um, at this point, I would still, you know, want to see a workup for the modular. It's just that this one is from 2019 and as we know, costs change on, on materials all the time. And also, this is a workup for, um, demolition, demolition. So I know that I would assume that the $500,000 would be leaving, but you would still have to do a slab and foundation if you were depositing a modular. So I would just like to see a more updated modular projection, um, number one. But I, I do still prefer Barack Obama because we still have to, we can't just let the building go empty anyway. If we did a modular, we still have issues in that building that we would have to fix because we want to repurpose it. So if we're gonna repurpose it, we still have to go in there and fix issues. So we're still gonna run into everything that you mentioned if that still exists. Mr. La Raca?
Yeah, I, um, yes, I'm, I'm fine with, I understand you want to take this back to Building and Grounds. Just a couple of quick questions. I, I drove by, um, Wall and, uh, Belmar because they had modular, uh, and I gotta admit, they looked a lot, a lot better than, than I thought, but they are small. Do we have any data on modular prefab kind of building that would be as large as, as what we would need? Do we know of a district that, that has that and, and done that? Number one, and number two, I think I asked Jeff this on the tour. The elevator currently in Obama is fine, functional, and there, there are not issues there, or are there? So. Carol's point, that's 250,000 right there. We got an elevator problem.
Right, so the, for your first question, I'm not aware of another district off the top of my head that, you know, would need about 10,000, 9,000 square feet of, of space. Uh, but we could certainly try and speak to the architect and some other folks to see if we can determine if there is a comparable that we could look at or talk to and what the cost was and et cetera. Uh, in terms of the elevator at Obama, uh, similar to the one at the middle school, there were issues with it. We continue to maintain it. It is old, the building obviously is a hundred years old and the elevator has been there for quite some time. Uh, the current estimate on the spreadsheet that you have shows a refurbishment of the car itself. Uh, so it's been diligent in making sure that the maintenance has been up kept. However, again, it's an aging unit and would have to be evaluated by the architect in terms of their best recommendation. Which, as you noted, include a replacement.
Yeah, and my final comment would just be, what I, what I'm concerned about is just as, as we talked about the taxi, you anticipate, uh, negative feedback from people. Uh, I think going to the, the president, Madam President's point, i- if you say Obama is too old a building, we run the risk of getting hit between the eyes with the statement, well, then why are you keeping it? And I think if we may, we're, it seems like the administration from day one said, let's keep it. We want to keep it. I, I think my, my, my current bias is we've got to be using it a lot soon. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Kiri, have a, oh.
Angela, Angela, have a question? Thank you. Um, I'm, one of my concerns is the furnace, I don't see it listed here. So, uh, did I miss that?
No. And so part of the HVAC, which is another, a similar concern, that furnace is, um, dated 1918. And so, uh, we are, then we're considering and concerned about HVAC issues because we have the Obama School 10 months for student use. Converting it to central office means it will be 12-month use. And so we have to ensure that the HVAC and the whole heating, ventilation, air conditioning is up to code to accommodate that, especially in the, the times that we're in right now during this global pandemic.
So here's what I think. I understand and I appreciate Madam President as well as, um, Chairman Dominic La Raca, we have to use the building. But my concern is as the state monitor has said, there may be some expenses that we haven't really looked at. As you know, my husband, uh, worked for the New Jersey Natural Bath. He had once serviced that building. That furnace is several years old, 100 years old. The pipes, the block that it sits on is asbestos. So when you, and the pipe is wrapped or, or asbestos according to him. So that's a concern and that's an expense that we have not considered. So these numbers, or this number here may not be accurate. So perhaps as Madam President said, maybe we do need to have a new write-up so that we can take that into consideration regarding that furnace to see what that cost will be.
Well, what I would recommend is that, um, Buildings and Grounds and Finance, maybe do another walkthrough with the architect and ask pertinent questions, especially with all the write-ups on here, and we get an accurate number as well as the modular and updated, an updated, uh, number because like I said, it's 2019. So if all this can go back to Buildings and Grounds so that we can really take a look at it. But I know that time is of the essence and this is a conversation that we have been having and we have not made much movement on over the past couple of years. So definitely I had planned on having a resolution in a, you know, a final, final, um, direction tonight, uh, for Barack Obama. But like I said, this can go back to Buildings and Grounds and they can work hand-in-hand with, with the, um, the architect and do a walkthrough and ask the pertinent questions and maybe pencil through some expenses like, uh, Madam Vice President said. And we can also compare apples to apples when we're looking at the modular, uh, modular proposal. But like I said, with the modular, my concern is taking more, uh, real estate away from the children of Asbury Park. So those, there's concerns on both sides of what we're looking at. So I believe that it should go back to Buildings and Grounds. Buildings and Grounds should look at a updated proposal of the modular and definitely walk through with the architect and kind of figure out where, um, our real costs are.
May I have a question?
Sorry.
Do we have any plans or what are the plans for, uh, Barack Obama, um, for the first, second floor? Do you have plans for that, Madam Superintendent?
We're still looking for community partnerships. We have had some conversations with some nonprofits. I did have, um, a gentleman, uh, that was interested in looking at the building, but it would be, um, the concerns around just having air conditioning, for example, for 12-month use. I will also add, uh, to your point that the walkthrough, I mean, the, um, district architects, attachment one, I'm, I'm going to refer to that one as attachment one. In other words, the one that does not have the modular cost on it did include a walkthrough, a very recent walkthrough of the district. Um, and so when we talk about not accurate or, um, not the most current cost, the question is not about what's on that paper. It's more so the cost that would be associated with doing what's on that paper.
No, when I spoke about the current cost, I talked about the modular because that's 2012, that estimate.
Yeah, there was, I was, um, referring to the comment about, um, Ms. Anderson, uh, Ms. Anderson's name about the potential for, I don't know, what the pipes might be wrapped in, all of those other things and how it may push the timeline down. Those are things that we would not be able to know until we actually begin that work.
Madam President, can I make a comment when, uh, Ms. Grillo is done?
I'm finished.
Just want to, I don't know, a lot of, uh, many board members weren't, weren't here when, uh, the Obama School was vacated, when, uh, the state monitor was Bruce Rodman and the kids were consolidated into the other classrooms and the schools and then the, um, And then the um alternative school was housed there as long as the parent center. And then in 2014, the school was reopened to uh regular classrooms. And before that reopening, there was a half a million dollars of expenses that the district had to make sure certain things were done to that district, including additional remediation. So I just will remind people that of some of the work that had been done that maybe the architect doesn't know. And I know that um there are still some plans around or some uh documents that show what was done previously. So there's some uh information that Buildings and Grounds could have about what was already done and how it was done. Maybe give them a little bit of some of the ideas that could cut costs uh when reviewing this.
Okay, so this is going to be referred back to Buildings and Grounds, and we'll discuss it again next board member.
That's great.
I I just, I just want to say that I do agree with you um with that. Um, I do feel as though we do need to walk through and really understanding what we're dealing with um with the asbestos as well. Also, because we're all just hearing, you know, so let's really get an update. And like uh Mrs. Ziski said, um, there was work done um that the architect may not know. So it may not be as bad as, you know, as we think it is, you know. So I think another walkthrough, you know, is is fair to do. And so hopefully, we'll have that update in the next meeting.
Can I ask, did the, did the architect have a history of what was done in the building? Like, we're assuming that the architect doesn't know what like what happened there. But like, does he have like a log or some sort of a of a compendium of any improvements that were done when um Ms. Lizinski was was referring to when the alternative school was there? Um, and there were certain, certain things that needed to get done. Do we know if if the architect has has a, I don't know what you would call it, I guess, a log or or a list of uh of those improvements?
All right, so there is no log, unfortunately, or Barack Obama book that just shows the improvements made to that. We can go back through some of the project work with our Building and Ground Supervisor and then review some of that. Um, when we did reopen the building, uh, the abatement was based on a very specific roof leak that that caused some damage in terms of asbestos. So we did not abate the entire building. We only abated those issues and areas that needed to be uh attended to. Uh, when we reopened the building, a lot of the work what was done was new furniture, repaint, um, a little bit of flooring where there might have been a tile, you know, cracked or chipped or whatever, where we would do a room or a section. Um, there was some electronics work done in terms of the electronics closet, so servers and routers and those sorts of things, as well as installing smart boards. So that's the type of work that was done to to bring the uh building back a little bit and to bring up the the tools for our staff to use to to teach our students. Um, in terms of the walkthrough that happened over the summer with the architect, uh, the approach was, this is the third floor. This is where we're considering central office. We walked through each room in the floor, on the floor, and asked the architect what she thought needed to be done to bring uh, you know, uh, to be repaired or or changed to make it appropriate office space for central office.
I think one of the, if I could, sorry. Um, I think one of the, one of the concerns that I have is the fact that before we go into um going, investing in something that's like a modular thing, especially one that 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 big, and I do agree that we should look and see if there's any other examples um of modular that big, is the fact that I think a lot of folks will want to know why Barack Obama School is still laying fallow and empty um and and underutilized. So um, that's my big concern is that we, and and also the fact that it is centrally located in in a spot where um a lot of, the majority of of families live, and they can walk to it as well. Um, as opposed to walking to a modular building uh over by the high school. So I think also in terms of convenience um and and just utilizing the existing properties as much as possible, uh, the concerns that I have. Um, and I'd love to see, you know, the vision of what we we had been talking about for a few years to making it an active hub for uh the Southwest Quadrant is, you know, is is still on the table. So um, let's do a walkthrough.
Any additional questions or comments? So at this point, like I said, I think this is going back to Buildings and Grounds, and we will be talking about it in February.
Just briefly, I want to just report on a couple of items. Uh, first and foremost, I want to thank the Asbury Park Toyota for their wonderful donation of 10 trees to beautify our property. It just looks so lovely. I was so delighted to to actually be a witness to it and to see all of that uh, to see the beautification underway. So thank you so much to the Asbury Park Toyota for thinking about the Asbury Park School and for making those trees home a part of our district. Um, also, uh, just wanted to report out on how much uh the bringing in and the transition of our students back into the district has been met so positively. I want to thank the APEA, that's our Teachers Union Association, and our APEASA, our Administrators Association, for supporting such a wonderful transition back into our hybrid instruction. Our students and our families are so delighted to be a part of it. The data that I have included uh for the board members' review is just a quick snapshot of, excuse me, the return into the district. And many thanks to the board for supporting the uh transition back. I know we are all actively watching and and seeing what's going on across our nation and even within our state. And so at a time like this, where the educators, the administrators, and all have come together to ensure that our children have a space to turn to for some sort of normalcy has really been significant. You'll see that it's reflected as well in the um data that I shared with you. Uh, more than 50% of our parents and families want to have an in-person instruction experience. And so you'll see that we are up to 1,011 total uh hybrid, 92 for full in-person, and the full in-person is for our students in prepay uh special ed, so any student that has an INP, as well as for our level-one English learner. So we have 92 of them in-person. And then we know that um our governor has given us uh has afforded families full unconditional opportunity for a full remote experience. And for those families for whom that is still an option, we have 187 of them that are on the full virtual option. So I just wanted to share with you how wonderfully received the transition back into the schools have been. And that completes my superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Um, we'd like to open the floor up for public participation in accordance with the board policies 0167. We have three minutes. Um, you can either raise your hand or send in an email um and just state your name and your address. We had a hand up before we went into.
At this time, there's no emails to our public comment email box. Mr. Brannigan, uh, do you see any uh comments or callers using the star three function?
Yes, I have a Trace Rogers. I'm going to unmute right now.
Good afternoon, Tracy Rogers, to the avenue. Um, first, first off, a question, uh, has the city reached an agreement? I mean, has the district reached an agreement with the city? How much they will contribute uh to the to to the uh school uh from their pilot programs uh or any any resources financially uh for the budget, for this budget year? Also, the second question is, uh, I know in October, districts have to provide the final numbers to the state as to how many students are in this in this year. Uh, can we get a a a count of that, that number tonight? Also, this seems to be very, I'm sitting here listening, that we're talking about, we know we have to reduce millions of dollars, and we haven't really come up with a real assessment on what we're going to do. And uh moving out of a building, moving into a building that's empty, and talking about rebuilding a building and a 97,000, $7,000 door reentry and tiles. Uh, you know, we're we're in a situation where we need to get things done. And sometimes it's not going to always look pretty. And we have to have multiple assessments on all, all these, all these uh uh projects that are going on. And I think there should be more community input. And uh I would definitely not be at uh somebody's building and ground meeting to talk about, we need more assessments on what we're going to be doing by putting these uh buildings uh 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 creating a modular. I, 2.6 million. Wh- what is the difference between this modular and going into this other building where we're moving equipment? And what's the equipment moving if it's 2.4 million? You know, it it doesn't seem to be adding up. And 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 this is this, I, and I think I'm a very rational person. When you sit down, and we should have full analysis of every cost that we're talking about building and not walking around with a architect to say, uh, what what's going to make this 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 look better? You got to move into an office, you need a phone, and and you need a computer. That's that's what we, we need to get back to educating these kids. And and uh this is what we need to get done. And I I I want to see a a real analysis of everything that's going on with this whole district. You know, we have four or five buildings. Let's look at what we knew. The audit came in and told us that we had to move these kids to uh one building to make it cheaper. So we need a real analysis on what's going on. Thank you. And if you can answer your question.
Yeah.
Sure. So um your question on the pilot contribution. Pilots are an arrangement between the city and the developer, and there is no inclusion of of contributions from that pilot to the school district. Uh, so at this time, there is no uh arrangement like that. Um, you talked about the final October number. I believe the final reported number was 2,095 uh total students uh in the district. Um, in terms of moving central office, I I don't know.
In terms of moving central office, I don't know the um, or this part um that it's going back to Buildings and Grounds so that we can get, you know, more accurate numbers uh because of the the two um estimates that we're looking at. Uh, there's about a year and a half difference between uh the comparisons.
Mr. Brannigan, do we have anybody else?
At this time, no one has raised their hand.
And we still do not have any other emails.
Okay, so at this time, um, we will close public participation.
Closing public participation at 7:47.
And we will be receiving the state monitor's report.
There's no report.
Okay, um, item 10, our vice president will be reading.
Thank you, Ms. Antiana. This month is School Board Rec- Recognition Month, and I'd like to read the resolution uh for the record. Whereas the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January 2021 to be School Board Recognition Month, a time when all residents can acknowledge the contributions made by our local school board members. And whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education is one of 580 local school boards in New Jersey, which sets policy oversees operations for public school districts. And whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education embraces the goal of high-quality education for all New Jersey public school students. And whereas the New Jersey local school boards help determine the educational goals for approximately 1.4 million children in pre-kindergarten through 12th grade. And whereas the New Jersey's 5,000 local school board members, who receive no renomination for their services, act as advocates for public school students as they work with administrators, teachers, and parents for the betterment of public education. And whereas school boards strive to provide the resources necessary to meet the needs of all students, including those with special needs. And whereas boards of education provide accountability to the public, they communicate the needs of school district to to the public, and they convey to school administrators the public's expectations for the schools. And whereas New Jersey can take pride in its schools, which rank among the nation's best in key achievement indicators, such as the National Assessment of Educational Progress Scores and the Preparation for College Through Advanced Placement Offering Offerings and SAT Assessments. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education does hereby recognize the services of local school board members through New Jersey as we join communities statewide in observing January 2021 as School Board Recognition Month. And be it further resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education urges all New Jersey citizens to work with their local school boards of education and public school official, public school staffs towards the advancement of our children's education.
President. I just wanted to um revisit one thing. Um, can we have a quick recording on the board goals? Um, Mr. Barillo?
There we go, now you can hear me. Uh, hold on one second, I'm just pulling it up. I just lost it on my uh, on my computer here. Um, there was a revision that I sent regarding uh board goal number two. Did we want to talk about, Madam President, did we want to talk about the other board goals as well? Or do you want to go? Okay, do you want to board goal one first?
No, you can go. You're awesome, June.
All right. All right, so so uh with board goal two, two, that was um communications and accountability to the board. That was assigned to uh me and Madam Board President. Um, and we had come up with uh three, three bullet points with some subsets to it uh related to the timeliness of information requests to the administration. Um, we uh we revised this a few times, um, taking feedback from uh from the board. Uh, and we came up with with these three, three bullet points. So one is timeliness of information requests to the administration. Uh, that includes uh administration must address requests of information to a board member uh within 24 to 48 hours of the request. If the request requires more time, the requesting board member or board members should be notified within uh those 24, 48 hours of the reason for the delay and expected time of request fulfillment. If the request is made at a board meeting and is not fulfilled before the subsequent board meeting, um, it must be reported on its progress uh at that meeting and each subsequent board meeting until it's fulfilled. Um, and the request will will remain as old business on the agenda until until it's fulfilled. Um, in addition, uh, the board should be appraised uh by the superintendent on a regular basis the progress in meeting his or her merit goals. Uh, we feel that this is, this is important. Um, so that way, um, we can, we can kind of keep track and see what's what's being hit uh on the. So that way, we can, we can kind of keep track and see what's, what's being hit on those goals. Point number two is the procedure for board members' information requests to the administration. And what we decided was that any request or question shall be asked in committee or at a board meeting. Otherwise, it should be relayed through the president or the VP. And the reason for this was just so everyone's on the same track in terms of any requests for, requests or questions, and that the president and the VP are appraised of what's going on. And then the final point was about any kind of consequences to any non-compliance of the, of timely information requests. And this is something that the policy committee is going to be asked to report on. It's more just in terms of best practices and guidelines to see how, you know, how, how other school districts and what Strauss S M A has to say about, if anything, on that. So those are the, that's board goal number two that essentially has to do with effective communications and accountability vis a vis the board and the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Grillo. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, can we have a board goal number one? Is that Mrs. Zinski?
Yes, that is communicating our story. I have, I did look at other districts in Monmouth County in the state about whether they have some sort of, I guess you would call it like a profile or bio of board members with their picture on their websites, and indeed they do. And I think it's a nice idea that when the community goes on and, you know, the parents and et cetera go on our district website, that if they are interested in looking who the board of ed members are and what they're all about, that they have some information about, you know, whether community service or what they do. And I did speak to Mr. Hastings about getting new photos of everybody, and then asking board members to get a little summary about themselves a little bit so that can go on the district website. Right now, I did also talk with some other updates with the, the website, and so far, that's all we got in our board goal number one. So if everybody can think of a little bit about themselves that they want to share on our website, I think it's a nice little addition.
Sounds good. Ms. Zinski, aren't you? I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I'm all for, that's Joe. I'm all for new pictures.
That's all of it. But Ms. Zinski, you're, you're also, is it you and Ms. Breach on number three, or you and Mr. Lotaraca?
Mr. Lotaraca's the lead on number three.
Mr. Lotaraca?
Yeah, number three is updates with regard to budget. I, I think we've, we've touched on some of them in the workshop today. We're running a little bit behind, but we're seeing in terms of, and we can provide a little more information, but the savings throughout the year we've been able to accumulate, we've got resignations and retirements will determine our, we're coming close to determining our revenue. Is Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but the administration feels confident we can balance next year's budget without options that, that would be along the lines of looking at outsourcing and that sort of thing. And again, we have some information on that, but we'll continue to give more information as we move into February so the board has a general sense of how the, the budget's going to be presented and balanced with the loss of the adjustment aid in March.
Thank you, Ms. Lotaraca. I also have another suggestion. I think because the budget, there's, the budget is going to be an issue again in March, I think we should look at maybe putting together a town hall or something to get ahead of the changes that are going to happen with the taxes and just give the community an update of everything that's going on in the school district.
So that's, that's not a bad idea. I think that's a good idea.
I don't, I don't think we can argue against getting information and communication out to the public for people to understand the rules were operated under what, all the improvements we've made and right. And then here's, here's the news with regard to cuts in revenue increases, whether you got to do a town hall or just somehow get information out in another way. I'd agree with that.
Okay, so if you and Ms. Zinski want to kind of work on that because it is a part of number, her, her goal also. I think Joe is pretty good at that.
Oh, that took an ugly turn. All right, we'll talk about that and, and connect with the administration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Madam President, you should prepare probably to have a special meeting for that town hall if we come up with a date of some sort too and do that.
Okay, we can, I can call you tomorrow and we can put the finishing touches on that. Okay, so at this time,
Can we get a motion for acceptance of the minutes 11A through D on A2?
Move it.
Move by Ms. Zinski, second by Ms. Antien. Ms. Zinski?
Yes.
Ms. Antien?
Yes.
Ms. Aldis Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Lotaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy? Mr. Saunders? Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, at this time, we'll be going into closed executive session. Mr. Wise, if you want to brief everyone on the reason?
Sure. So pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, the board will be going into the executive session to discuss litigation, contracts, negotiation, and other matters that require attorney-client privilege and advice. It's anticipated that tonight's executive session will last between 20 and 30 minutes, at least at this point. And Mr. Hastings, if you have, or Madam President, if you have the resolution to read, that would be terrific.
Yes. Whereas the Open Public Meeting, Meetings Act allows for the exclusion from discussion at the public portion of a meeting of a certain matter as outlined below, and whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education wishes to discuss such matters made and will make such discussions public when a probable conclusion has been reached. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Jan, that the January 28, 2021 at Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purpose as outlined and described below, upon return, action may be taken.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Zinski?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Aldis Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lotaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? And Ms. Antien?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Madam President, we're going to be going into Zoom, correct? We're going to exit out of this one and go into the Zoom?
Yes.
Before we do that, for the members of the public, if we could just clarify whether or not we'll be coming back into this WebEx meeting at the conclusion of the Zoom meeting, or if we'll be starting directly from Zoom.
We still have an agenda to vote on.
There you go. Okay, thank you. There's your answer. We'll be coming back into the WebEx meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Grillo? Do you see Mr. Grillo? Mr. Rock?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Zinski? And Ms. Antien?
Madam Superintendent, would you like to ask for a consent agenda?
I'm requesting a consent agenda for items B1 to B5, including all attachments. Second. Second.
Any questions? No? Okay. Roll call please, Mr. Hastings.
This is for all items B1 to B5. Ms. Zinski?
Yes.
Ms. Aldis Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes, but I'm staying on B2 to A, B, and C.
Thank you. Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo? Is that a yes, Mr. Grillo? Yes. Mr. Lotaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy? Mr. Saunders? Yes, thank you. Ms. Antien?
Yes, however, I'm staying on B1, item A.
All motions carry.
Okay, Mr. Hastings, would you like to ask for some consent agenda?
Yes, Madam President. Could I have a motion for all items C1, number one, to C3, number eight?
Move it.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call please, Mr. Hastings.
Ms. Aldis Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo? Yes, I see. Okay. Mr. Lotaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy? Mr. Saunders? Thank you. Ms. Zinski? And Ms. Antien?
Yes.
All motions carry.
Now, before I ask for a motion to close, I wanted to just thank everyone for their participation tonight on my first official board meeting as the president. One of the last things I'm going to do is set up a mentorship for the two brand-new board members. I wanted to, I, I did speak to Ms. Anderson, Ms. Aldis Anderson. And, well, okay, I'll start with Remy. So Remy, I would like you to be mentored by Mr. Lotaraca, I did ask him, and Ms. Zinski. Reason being, Mr. Lotaraca knows a lot about finance and that's your lane, and Ms. Zinski knows a lot about everything. So I would like to set you up with them too. If you have any questions, if you have any concerns, if there are certain things that you need to figure out how to navigate, one of them will be able to direct you in the right direction. You do have the phone numbers. Did we send the, we sent the confidential, so you have their phone numbers on the confidential list? Are you okay with that, Ms. Lotaraca? And Ms. Zinski?
Yes.
Okay. And then Ms. Cook, I wanted to set you up with myself and Ms. Aldis Anderson. It would have been Ms. Carol Jones, but she's not here anymore, but she did curriculum instruction. But again, if you have any questions, any concerns, feel free to contact one of us. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to close.
Motion to close.
That was fast. Give me a second. Thank you, Ms. Breach. All in favor? Any not in aid? Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Good night, everybody. Did well.
Good night, everyone.